Oh.
At this time, we have invitation.
Oh, hold on a second, Mr. Chair.
One minute, ma'am.
That's why the power's not coming up.
Harrison, you're speaking about solos, is that what you were starting?
Not making the old band sound. You're getting down there without.
Moving pretty smooth.
Yep, there it goes. That was it. Today I'm supposed to be. I guess I was making more sense than that movie.
Hospital.
Here it is now. There we go. It's his first call, right? I don't know. I don't know if it's Volmart. I don't know if it's Volmart. This is. I don't know shop.
Welcome to the Prince Edward County. We'll be joining you.
Good to go, Mr. Chair.
Good evening. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? And please join me for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Let me see.
Now we go with conflict of interest. Okay. All right, we're moving along to recognitions.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. We are pleased to announce that Cheryl Stimson, our Director of Finance, has been selected as our Employee of the Month for August. Cheryl consistently demonstrates a strong commitment to teamwork and problem solving. She approaches her work with a positive attitude, a willingness to support others, and a steady focus on finding solutions to challenges as they arise. Cheryl is known for her professionalism and reliability, both inside and outside of the workplace. Her efforts and dedication make her a valued Prince Edward County team member. Please join us in congratulating Cheryl on this well-deserved recognition.
We didn't tie enough. Congrats.
All right, good. Thank you, Cheryl. Let me ask some candidates. Good to go tonight. Now we go along with public participation. Did anyone sign up?
All right, second. Two folks, sir.
Okay. Ms. Vicki Page.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanted to come by and thank you all for allowing the Prince Edward County Republican Democratic Committee for allowing us to hold an Anthem Lemonade stand on the courthouse grass on July 19th. It was about 175 billion degrees with a heat index to match, but we have. I'm pleased to report that our citizenry raised over $300 for childhood cancer. We sent a check to Richmond, Virginia, to VCU for, to their oncology department to help them combat childhood cancer. As you know, childhood cancer cuts across all socioeconomic bounds. It doesn't recognize race, gender, politics, anything. So we were very pleased to hold this nonpartisan event and thank you all very much for the, for allowing us to use that space. And I don't know if I have any time left, but I'll switch hats real quickly. And since we have our new supervisor of the, our superintendent of the school district here, I just want to say that the Friends of the Library continued their practice of putting summer reading books from the Prince Edward County Summer Reading List in our little free libraries over the summer. And I think we passed out over 1,000 books that. We got some of them back, which is good because we can use them next year if the reading list doesn't change. But we put, put all those books into our five, six little free libraries over the summer. So that was a great success. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then here we have Ms. Allison Cruz.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Allison Cruz. I wanted to visit this evening and just really say thank you to each of you for your service to our community. And I'm thankful to be a part of this community here. I also appreciate our local law enforcement and our emergency services for all they do to protect us and to take care of us. We are very blessed here in the heart of Virginia. Also, as a concerned citizen, I wanted to share how important I feel the truth is in every way. But truth is often hard to come by, especially with our current federal administration. Now, it is more important than ever to really utilize our critical thinking skills and to seek truth. We need to find ways to unite us rather than divide us across this country and within our county. I also want to mention the reality of the immigrant detention prison we have here in Farmville. Many are unaware and many others don't care. While some are excited that people are being locked up, others like myself care about the well-being of all humans. As the hundreds locked up here are just down the street from a property that I own out on West Third Street, I've seen the increase in traffic down Waterworks Road. I'm thankful to learn Senator Don Byer visited last Friday and shared publicly about his visit there. He stated that they are in need of more doctors and nurses. I also spoke with Senator Cypher's yesterday during his office hours and learned that he visited about six weeks ago, he told me. But he has not shared that publicly that I'm aware of. Along with more truth, we need more transparency in all the ways. In learning more about the detention center, I feel there are many similarities between the private prison industry and the private trash industry. And I've learned more than I ever wanted to about trash as the waste management Maplewood landfill is literally in my backyard in Jetersville. I hear it and I smell it regularly. And just as many Amelians feel they aren't impacted by the landfill and that it's not worth understanding, it really does impact every Amelian because it is a part of the fiscal revenue that our county receives, just as this prison is part of the county's fiscal funding sources. Let me see, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Proper care and legal rights of detainees are not always at the forefront currently from reports that I've heard. I hope to find ways to help support those held here in our community. An important factor is being able to just have more eyes on. So just as I invite every board member and Amelia to tour the landfill, I ask of you or any available people who are allowed to have more eyes on at this core civic facility. Please do your best to see that during this time, all steps possible are taken to protect those unable to protect and advocate for themselves. Due process applies to all. I feel we are in a time where we are, all of our freedoms are in danger. But I hope that we all lead with compassion and love our neighbors and believe in the laws that this country was founded on. I want to be a helper and I'm here to help organize and strategize ways to be of help. So please reach out if I can be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We go with Board of Supervisors comments, Mr. Emmett.
Like I say, thank you all for being here this evening. I want to give a small shout out to our vice chair and his newly new wife.
His wife.
There you go. Young lady sitting right down here. Congratulations is what I would say to you.
Thank you.
All right, Jerry, it's up to you.
Likewise. Congratulations and Godspeed. And thank everyone for being here tonight. Mr. Gill.
Glad to see everyone and nice to see you, young lady. And I wish you all the happiest in the world. Thank you.
Yes, I do.
I did the same thing. Good to see you. Good to have all of you here to be a part of our government. We really appreciate that.
I'd like to thank everyone for attending. I would like to remind the new Mrs. Jones, it's on YouTube and she can be in the comfort of her own home. Thanks so much for your participation. It, it makes all the difference and thanks for coming.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the encouragement. I, I value so deeply each one of my colleagues here on the board, county staff. We have other organizations leadership present here tonight. And so I was really excited to get to bring my bride here and to introduce her to each one of you because y'all are like family to me. So thank you for being so welcome for everyone else. Thank you for being here. Thank you for holding us accountable as a board for voicing your concerns, for facilitating this discourse that we're able to, to arrive at the truth, which nothing is more important than the way the truth and life. So thank you, thank you for being here tonight.
I, I had the pleasure to go to ISIS other day. And I was quite impressed with the new, I didn't know the other people used to have, but these new people, they are more business and more together, let's say that. And had a good visit and I know they got a few little issues with, like I said, doctors and nurses. But as far as security, it's there. They there. So thank y'all for coming tonight and then we move on with some business. We need approval of the agendas.
There's no additions or deletions. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You got a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. And now we got the Atmac Young Farmers Trucking.
Need a vote, Mr. Chair. Emmett is a yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Yes. Dick is a yes.
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 Yes, okay. All right, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, now we have the event permit for Atmac Young Farmers Trucking tractor pull.
This is their annual permit request for the tractor pulling.
Move that we approved.
Second.
Okay.
I don't think I heard you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gill.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Dick is a yes?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Okay. All right. So now we are moving on to the business partner update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'd like to just present a quick introduction before welcoming Mr. Toby Toler up to the podium. Mr. Toler currently serves as the Strategic Account Manager for the Richmond and Farmville area markets with regional sales manager responsibilities for the Farmville area. And this is for Luckstone. He has been with Luckstone for 11 years, holding several roles within their sales team. He's actively involved in industry and community organizations, including the Virginia Asphalt Association, where he serves on the PAC Committee, the Virginia Ready Mixed Concrete Association, and the Farmville Area Chamber of Commerce. He resides in Farmville, Virginia with his wife Suzanne and their two children. Now I'd like to welcome Mr. Toler up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be with you tonight and share a little bit about who we are, what we do, and more importantly, why we do it. Luckstone began in business in 1923 and is the largest privately-held, family-run producer of crushed stone, sand, and gravel in the United States. Nationally ranked 15th among aggregate companies and 11th in crushed stone production. With 27 active operations and over 900 associates across Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia, we are proud to support the infrastructure and growth of the communities we serve. But beyond the numbers and the materials, what truly defines us is our commitment to people and purpose. As we enter our fourth generation of Luck family leadership, our mission remains clear. Igniting human potential through values-based leadership and making a positive impact through environmental stewardship and community engagement. Luckstone is part of a broader family of five business units within Luck Companies. The other divisions are Luck Ecosystems, Luck Real Estate, and our two nonprofit organizations, the Interwill Leadership Institute and the Luck Foundation. Right here in the Farmville Prince Edward area, we operate two key locations, our Burkeville and Prince Edward quarries. The Burkeville Quarry located at the intersection of 460 and 360 has been operating since 1935, making it our third oldest active site. It is a granite material and services Amelia, Lunenburg, and Nottaway Counties, including Fort Pickett. The plant produces a wide variety of products and supports 19 full-time employees along with summer interns. For years, Burkeville serviced the whole South Side market. In 2016, we decided with the demand at Fort Pickett and in the Farmville area, it was time to open our Prince Edward location. The Prince Edward Quarry, just west of Farmville and 460, opened in August 2017 and is also granite-based. Though it is a smaller operation, it produces key products for this market and services Prince Edward County, the town of Farmville, Longwood University, Hampton Sydney College, and the greater South Side, Virginia area. The site employs eight full-time team members and two summer interns. We're continuing to invest in its future and have recently upgraded the plant to wash stone for our asphalt customers and plan to build a new shop in early 2026. And we have more plans to upgrade the site as aggregate demand increases. Our commitment to this region extends beyond our physical operations. We are active members and sponsors in many organizations, including the Prince Edward Farmville Youth Association, where we sponsor baseball and softball teams, the local Chamber of Commerce, the Ruiton Club, and fundraising events for our local fire department and schools. We are proud of our legacy, our people, and the role we play in shaping the physical and social infrastructure of our communities. Whether it's the road you drive on, the fields teams play on, or the local organizations we support, our work is grounded in purpose led by value and driven by people. Thank you for allowing us to be part of your community.
Thank you.
Very good. And now we move on to community partner update.
There you go. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you for allowing me this opportunity to discuss with you some accomplishments by Crossroads Community Services Board. I am Dr. Melba Moore, Executive Director for Crossroads. Good evening to the participants in the audience as well as to our chairman, co-chair, boards of supervisors, and our county administrator. Just want to take you through just a little bit. Maya Angelo said, "Without a clear direction of purpose, it is difficult to make progress or take action towards achieving our dreams." Have to have a vision. Got a vision for Crossroads. Last year, one of the things that I wanted to do with the team was to really identify this holistic impact. What were we doing? Were we making an impact within our community? Next slide. We found out a couple of things, relationships, partnerships, that we needed to focus on to improve. So this year, we're going to demonstrate our impact because we're bringing our services to the community. We will be coming before, before our boards of supervisors to talk about what we do, how we do it, and how we need your help in doing what we do. It's all about, and the superintendent said it to me as he was talking, we keep our community and our individuals that we serve in the center of what we do. That's what we need to do. So we were in the community in several events last year, but I'm always, I'm a business person, so I'm always looking at how can we be more cost-effective? So last year, we did have, next slide. A, you can advance it again. Yes, please. We had our back-to-school event. Well, it's okay to do that in a silo when you're really large. But we're a small community. So I felt that this year it would be more important if we shop around what we're going to do with our community. So this year, we went to Nottaways. We participated in Nottaways back-to-school event. The other thing that we've done is we're going to take gifts to each one of the other six counties and give to their schools as well, some supplies for any student that might need it. Because we want to give back and say thank you for allowing us to come in, work with your students, and that kind of thing. So this was the culminating photo from our event last year, the back-to-school event. And I have to tell you, it is the team. I can't do this by myself. It takes all those people that were there and then some to pull these kinds of events off. So it's so important that we do it in partnership with others. It's called spreading the love. So we had partnerships also with law enforcement. Law enforcement is key to what we do in emergency services. It is Sergeant S's team that goes into those hospitals, that takes and transports our individuals when they need to be placed in a medical facility. When, and that's under a TDO or ECO. Here you see in February and March, we had training. And again, these are the individuals that when there's a crisis, they stand up. And these are people in our community. These are officers that are working in law enforcement. You can't do it without them. So thank you to all of my law enforcement partners. Crisis intervention, next slide. So just to give you a sprinkle about what was the impact last year. So through Crossroads, the CIT program, there were 11 law enforcement officers who were trained. We had approximately 538 pre-screened. So those are the interactions between that person who's in crisis with one of our therapists really getting to the heart and the soul of what's happening here and to make that determination if this is someone that needs a bed. 185 emergency custody orders, 204 temporary detention orders. Those are those detention orders where the law enforcement has to transport those individuals to a hospital. And I will have to tell you, trying to find a bed is a tedious task because everybody's trying to find a bed for those individuals who are under a TDO throughout all of these counties. Next slide. One of our, in our program area, our developmental disabilities area, the program manager decided that she wanted to do something different. It was about really teaching internally what they do, but getting a better handle on dispelling some of the myth. Going beyond the label is what we call it, beyond the label. And here was an instance where a parent came in and talked about parenting a child with autism. And let me see if we got some. Next slide. Law, look at there, who's there? Law enforcement, families, our staff were there to learn more so that we can be more impactful and more helpful to our individuals. And we did get a photo release for this. Just want to make sure we know that. Next slide, okay. Of course, training expands what we know. And at any age, we can learn on that last slide. Learning happens at every age. And that younger, young lady right there is talking and engaging in that session that they had. Very impactful, very, very special for the services that we provide. Next slide. Thank you. And this just goes in and talks about our IDD section. Individual Intellectual Developmental Disabled Disabilities. Went into Longwood and they worked with the hearing and speech and their graduate students. Again, engaging them in what we do because we know we need to pull from the education and the mind sources here in our community. We need them. Next slide. So these are just the, the flyers that were created for Beyond the Label. Last year, next slide. We became ADA compliant. I was so happy about that, to be able to get the doors up and open for individuals to enter. No one is denied services. And when you do something like this, it lets people know the doors are open for us. Next slide. Accomplishments. Next, okay. So there's a long litany of things that happened. The thing that I'm most excited about. The thing that I'm most excited about is we purchased the Palatin built property that was, that's on our property. Thank you to Mr. Love for helping out. Thank you, county administrator, for guiding me towards Mr. Love to be able to get his assistance and be able to secure the property, get it zoned for what it was supposed to do. And thank you to my chairman for making sure that happened on the board. I want to just report that we are on budget. I like hearing that. I hope my board likes hearing that. And we are probably ahead of schedule. I had anticipated that we would be opening the new two facilities in December, January, looks like October, maybe between October and November. So we will definitely have an open house, and you are all invited. So we'll make sure you get invited to that. The other thing that was really important for our organization is the attention to us being better. We have to. And I believe the staff has embraced that concept, that we must do better and be better. Sometimes, and I think when the lady got up and talked about truth, sometimes when there's a shake at the top, there are things that cause you to pause and to think about how important it is what you do and the people that you serve. So this year and last year has really caused us to take a look at what is going on in the community at that federal level and how will that impact us, and being cautious about the decisions that we make. Next slide. The status of our twenty-four, twenty-five goals. We're still in the process, just like the ICE Detention Center needing nurses. I'm recruiting a nurse. I'm looking for a substance use coordinator. I do believe we have turned the corner today when I talked to my HR manager, director, about we've had a therapist position vacancy the year prior to me coming here. I've been here three and a half years. I think we just about turned the corner and we'll be able to say all of those positions are filled. It's tough trying to recruit people for that specific skill. I'm in the process today of putting together a grant proposal that I hope will be approved through our state partners regarding some funding that I'm requesting for workforce enforcement. So you'll hear more about that. Next slide. As we look to twenty-five, twenty-six, communication two point oh, we must improve our communication, community engagement. We must change our image in our community and work better with our community partners. We need to increase our census in our residential and day support programs and to continue to be good financial stewards and move our department forward. Some things that we're doing, next slide. Thank you. Lift Your Voice Listening Sessions. This gives the middle managers an opportunity to be able to come in in separate groups to kind of talk about the things that are most pressing to them. My chairman has agreed to commit me to continuing to do that, and it's working really well. So thank you again. Reconnecting with our catchment areas, providing information and sharing information, reestablishing ourselves in the schools that we have not been in for a while, and if we are there, to improve what we're doing. Improve our communications with our judicial system, Chamber of Commerce, and we'll do that in person, but we also have an opportunity to improve our communications within our organization through my Crossroads Corners is where I am on teams and I invite everybody in to provide some information, and we kind of talk through those hot topic items that are important to them. Provide program highlights and performance successes. What you will see this year is that we're going to be providing, when we come into the boards of supervisors meetings, we're providing you with data. Data guides your decision-making. And I want to make sure we're sharing with you what we're doing, at what rate are we doing, and how do we measure our success. So we will be sharing that kind of information with you. Next slide. You can go to the next one. Another thing that we need to do is open our doors so that we can bring people in to take a look at our residential homes. We will be working on making any renovations to those so that we can do that. And you'll probably have an opportunity when we do the open house to open up the two new buildings that you'll have an opportunity to kind of walk through to see our actual operation. I don't know how many people have been to our campus, but if you haven't, I'm sure you've seen it. It is a beautiful campus when you're driving and you take a look and you see all the greenery. It is really a beautiful campus. So if you get a chance, please participate and please come by and see us. I'm either there or they'll find me so that I can kind of take you around if you so choose. Next slide. This is important, the next slide, really important. Reduce our write-offs. In January, we took a look at our bad debt, per se. And for the first six months of the year, last six months of the year, we saw that we had about fifty thousand dollars in bad debt. Well, that's not us wasting money. What's happening is we're anxious to make sure we get people into service and give them services. What happens, it gets caught up in that insurance wheel, as you say, that insurances deny it, we have to resubmit it, that kind of thing. So we're putting a watchful eye to that. It's very important, and all of our managers are engaged and involved in that. Contract reviews are going really well. Last year, we did develop a contract monitoring process tool that we put in place that was not in place before. So we're monitoring that because I'm sure that I'll probably have an internal audit that's going to be coming up in maybe October. And we are on target, and we cleared up any bad outdated audit findings that we had through the state, through that office. Next slide. So the takeaways, the collective efforts of the staff has been to make certain client voices is received in the development of their goals. The performance this year has been to correct audit findings and develop plans to ensure compliance. We accessed the market for equitable compensation. Yes, we did that. We provide training for staff development and our improvement, and we will continue to do that and let that run across the entire organization. Evaluate staff to meet competency metrics, seeking input from staff on organizational inputs. Lunch and learns of where I actually select a particular program, any program, I pull it out of a hat, and I go and I have lunch with them, and we talk about what gripes them. No managers are involved. I let them have their voice so that they can be heard. Of course, keep the Palatin Project on target, and that's going very well. Create additional opportunities for growth, and again, improve our communication across the organization. Thank you. I know I went beyond three minutes. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
We'll move on to highway matters.
Sarah Puckett, AKA Scott Frederick's coming around.
So I have nothing to report for VDOT, but I'm happy to accept any highway matters, and we'll report them back to VDOT for you. You may have seen that they did, they did set a date for the reopening of the Sandy River Road Bridge, which is Monday, September the eighth, I think was the.
Grass cut. What status of grass cut? Secondary road?
I can.
Started on the day.
I can partly answer that, Sarah. I know they've been going out and finishing round one, and what Scott told me on our drive last week was they pretty much were going to just continue mowing.
They just keep turning right.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that was last month. I must be on the left.
Is there a specific road?
Yeah, it's Dr. Price's district, but I had a neighbor watching Henderson Road.
Henderson.
Henderson Road. It's just, one of the residents feel like just dangerous, grass so tall, children can't see, can't see vehicles coming down fifteens. So I told her I would make note of it tonight.
We'll pass that along.
But while you're there, just go ahead and include New Bethel and Berthold.
They haven't gotten the first cut there yet?
Yeah, they had the first cut.
But they haven't, not this round?
Not the second.
You've had so much rain this year.
Yes. If they could get that, that'll be good before September the sixth.
Jerry, that's left isn't left out.
Hopefully not. If they could do it before September the sixth, it'd be great.
Well, Sarah, it's a good point. You know, the grass has been cut, but it's growing so rapidly, I don't know if it can even wait until that's scheduled, second cutting.
They've done a nice job on the five-four road today. They actually cut the Johnson grass off this time instead of pushing it over.
Oh, good. On that west end? Yeah, that's.
Sarah, it's in Lou's district with Singleton Road that hole has opened up again.
The one coming, the spring?
Yes.
Coming down the hill?
It's bad in the last few days. They can get out there and do something with it, but that's a bad spot.
I don't know what they can do to fix it. It's soft down under the road. They gotta dig a hole, build it back up.
Scott got off easy tonight.
He did. We're gonna leave him alone until next month when he's here.
Eyeballing. Okay, economic development update.
Good evening again, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. On page fifty-one and on page one eighty-six of your package, you'll find my report, to which I'll provide a summary. And then after my summary, I'll return to the item on page fifty-five to address an item to take action on. The IDA had a regular meeting at the end of July, and at that meeting, that's their annual meeting, so the officers for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six were elected, and that included Mr. Watson, Mr. Bradley Watson for chairperson, Mr. Michael Montgomery for vice-chairperson, and then myself as secretary treasurer. The IDA also discussed their regular business, equipment loan proposals, incentive reinvestment grants, progress on the Hip Park project, and other economic development prospects at that meeting. I recently submitted the twenty twenty-four Enterprise Zone Annual Report, and the data from that report is included, well, it does include public and private investment figures, marketing efforts, and information on jobs created, and businesses that have opened as well as closed within the zone during the calendar year. And all of that information will be used in the DHCD Enterprise Zone Annual Report to the General Assembly. The Tobacco Commission grant application for the project Loud and Clear Marketing Skills for Small Business Success was submitted, and the request was for nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, which would help fund hands-on digital marketing, training, practical tools, and post-course consulting to help twelve to twenty small businesses in Prince Edward County strengthen their online presence and competitiveness. And this proposed project will be managed in partnership with Letterpress Communications. Regarding tourism, there are a few visitor center updates. So starting this week on Thursday, we should be able to start receiving credit card payments for gift shop items. So we're excited about that. It's been a long time coming, so we've just got to get our training done so that staff will be able to start doing that. Also, new t-shirt designs are coming to the gift shop. We're working on finalizing those designs. And a vote was recently held on our Facebook page, Explore Prince Edward VA, to allow our followers choose the new hop-up banner for the visitor center. And our very own, Mr. Doug Stanley's photography was selected. It was anonymous, of course, but he was the crowd favorite. That was the favorite one. So that one was selected, and shout out to him. And so it's a picturesque image of the Habbridge Trail, and the artwork is being finalized now, and so that order will be placed soon. So you'll also see that coming in a month or so, that new banner. Also, I'm excited to announce that the Moat Museum was selected to host on-site the American Revolution Commission's Virginia Two Fifty Mobile Museum Experience titled Out of Many One. The exhibit will open on September twelfth for school field trips and on September thirteenth to the public, and that's from nine AM to four PM. And so this is an interactive exhibit, which brings two hundred and fifty years of Virginia and American history to life through stories and artifacts that tell the broader story of the nation. The admission for this exhibit is free. Also, while you're there, you can step inside the Moat Museum to learn about the citizens of Prince Edward County's powerful role to fight for civil rights and education as well. This particular weekend is also Longwood University's parent weekend, as well as the Heart of Virginia Festival. So we are expecting a wonderful weekend with lots of things to do and lots of visitors. Updates to our tourism website, exploreprinceedward.com are coming soon as well. The website will be expanded to include itineraries, local tourism-related events, a homepage, and several visitor-focused promotional webpages such as outdoor recreation, history, lodging, and dining. And all of that is also from a grant that we recently were awarded, which will help fund that project, so we're excited about that as well. Thank you again for your time and your support, and I will try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so now turning on to page fifty-five. I will go ahead and address that item. I'll go ahead and go through the summary for that, and this is titled, or the agenda item is titled, Resolution for Tobacco Regional Revitalization Commission, Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Southern Virginia Program Grant Application, seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollar RFP. So staff would like to apply to the Tobacco Commission program for, submitting an application for seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars to request funding to further Phase Two of the Wayfinding signage project, which we've started, which consists of the fabrication and installation of eight trailblazer signs. Staff recommends that the seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars in local match funding be drawn from the county's dedicated transient occupancy tax revenue generated from hotels. A minimum one-to-one match or dollar-for-dollar is required for this grant application. The total estimated cost of the project is one hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred dollars. The county received a twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollar tourism grant to implement Phase One of the project, which can also be counted towards the match. Phase One included hiring Frazier Associates to complete information gathering and schematic design. The beginning of Phase Two included Frazier Associates completing construction and intent documents for the gateway signs, gateway sign review and coordination of survey plans, and document preparation for submittal to VDOT for final review and approval. The Commonwealth Regional Council has been engaged to provide grant application and administration for this project. And so you see there, there's a table that also further breaks down all of those costs for this project. And so for the project description, the proposed signs will direct motorists to four proximity destinations, two for each location on both sides of the roadway in the county, including the following: Hampton-Sidney College, Sandy River Reservoir, Briar Creek, or sorry, Briary Creek Lake, and the Manor Golf Club. And the county received two quotes for this project. Those are also attached in addition to the resolution that I drafted, and there's also excerpts from the construction and intent document as well. And staff recommends that you adopt the proposed resolution so that this can complete the application. And so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I move we adopt the proposed resolution.
Before we take a vote, you all know that.
Before, before we take a vote, Yonah, that's the question asker.
Yes.
We have two quotes, one at fourteen thousand and one at seventy-one thousand. Am I, am I reading that right?
And let me clarify.
Yeah.
So, if you look at
You know I need clarification.
Page sixty-three. So, there's the wayfinding signage, which are the big signs. They're like thirty-eight thousand on that quota piece. The ninety-eight fifty is your trailblazer sign, and then the small trailblazer sign is sixty-one eighty. There's some installation costs in there. We will actually have to put this out to a formal bid. We got, we solicited three quotes just to have a budget number for the grant. But when time comes, we'll actually have to put it in the newspaper and get to the process.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Ms. Pratt?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lee? Ms. Towns?
Yes.
Ms. Emmett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we, Ms. Terry Atkins?
Do you want me to take it, Terry, or you want? Mr. Chair, members of the board, back in the March twenty-eighth IDA meeting, Ms. Wilson explained the easement for the current Mid-Atlantic Broadband Communities Corporation, or MBC, Shelter Node was signed by Prince Edward County. They had approached the IDA about expansion of the shelter. That node, which carries the fiber through this region, comes in right behind the ag building and the water tank. And previously, the county had granted an easement, and they're looking right now to upgrade that and expand it. I don't think we charged last time, and really, it's just, it's the benefit of getting the fiber to our community. This is the backbone fiber that the shin tells, the connectses, and everybody else pulls off of. Since then, Russell Slaton, MBC's attorney, emailed a preliminary layout of the Shelter Node expansion for review along with the existing easement. Staff has since requested draft updated easement agreement for review along with proposed preliminary layout. Terry and Mr. Slaton have reviewed and approved the attached draft agreement for the site. There's a little sketch. As you can see, there's an existing twelve-by-twenty-foot shelter building, and this will be potentially two more shelter buildings right next to it. Really, you're not, the county's not gonna build anything on that location. It's kinda as you're starting to go down the hill towards Perisceramics. But we would recommend the board approving this easement request.
Ms. Jones?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Jakes says yes?
Yes. Yes.
Terry, you got that one, Terry.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be back with you. Anyway, as you have, over the last, I guess, two years, we've had various resolutions and, and in reference to the opioid, opioid settlement resolution. We do get the funding from that, but they're asking us to join in again for, there's several more manufacturers that they're going against. So, this is just asking for the resolution approving the county's participation in this. And they got Purdue Pharma, Sackler, and their related corporate entities, and asking to direct the county attorney to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation in the settlement. So, I have a sample motion down there for you. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
So move. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Towns?
Yes.
Jakes says yes. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. And then we have Ms. Cheryl Simpson, Finance and Human Resource.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our first item on the agenda for finance is the FY twenty-five school carryover request and appropriation. The Board of Supervisors has received a request from the Prince Edward County School Board requesting nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-six cents of federal and state carryover funds and local private business funds for the school operating budget per the attached letter from the acting superintendent. The Board of Supervisors will wish to approve and appropriate the funds requested following the public hearing to amend the FY twenty-six county and school budgets by the amount of nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-six cents. Per Section fifteen point two dash twenty-five oh seven of the Code of Virginia, a locality may amend its budget during the fiscal year. However, if such an amendment exceeds the currently adopted expenditures by one percent or more, then the locality must advertise the amendment at least seven days prior to the public hearing. The county's currently approved FY twenty-six budget is seventy-five millions four hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars, which means they exceed the one percent threshold. There is no anticipated cost except for the cost of publishing the public hearing notice.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Jakes says yes?
Yes.
Ms. Towns?
Yes.
Yes.
Ready for the next one? Elementary school renovation appropriation. The Board of Supervisors will wish to authorize a public hearing to draw down funds from the School Construction Assistance Program grant in the amount of eight million six hundred and five, fifty-five thousand seven hundred and ten dollars, and a literary loan in the amount of twenty-four million nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine to pay for current expenditures for those elementary school renovation projects that exceed the funding currently available in the county's FY twenty-six budget. For this transaction to take place, the board will have to authorize a public hearing to amend the FY twenty-six county and school budgets in the amount of thirty-three million six hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and nine dollars, and then appropriate same funds. And also, per the code, we have to amend the budget during the year.
Make a motion be approved.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Yes, for me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Next item is approval of vehicle purchases for the sheriff for FY twenty-five budget. The sheriff's office has requested board approval for the purchase and outfit of four new vehicles, three twenty-twenty-five Ford Police Interceptors, and one twenty-twenty-five Chevy Tahoe as part of the twenty-five vehicle replacement rotation. This purchase aligns with the board's annual budget allocation for four vehicles under the state contract to maintain a consistent fleet replacement schedule.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Towns?
Yes.
Yes, for me?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Next is approval, approval of vehicle purchases for the sheriff's office for FY twenty-six budget. The sheriff's office has requested board approval for the purchase and outfit of two Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles as part of the FY twenty-six vehicle replacement rotation. This purchase aligns with the board's annual budget allocation for four vehicles under the state contract to maintain a consistent fleet replacement schedule.
So move. Second. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Yes, for me?
Yes.
Ms. Towns?
Yes.
Okay.
Next item is Business Data of Virginia Service Contract Amendment. In June twenty twenty-four, the board authorized the amended contract of Business Data of Virginia to continue supporting the Commissioner of Revenue and Treasurer's office. Our IT Director, Sean Howard, continues training with Mr. Headley on the functions and procedures of the AS four hundred system as it pertains to Prince Edward County, and will continue working with Mr. Headley to train departments to be more autonomous and self-sufficient in their specialized AS four hundred program tasks. The attached Business Data Service Contract is an amendment to meet the county's current needs for program support as anticipated.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Yes, for me?
Yes. Yes.
The next item is review and recommendation by the Board of Supervisors for payment. The county accounts payable staff has received the attached invoices from the county attorney for services provided during the period October twenty-four through February twenty twenty-five, which are outside of the approval period for the county administrator. Per the county attorney's contract, is invoices not submitted within a hundred and twenty days after services are rendered will not be paid. The board will wish to consider whether payment should be made based on the intent of the contract for the county attorney to provide timely invoices per the contract. Attached
Should be paid.
I'm sorry?
Make a motion that should be paid.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Give me a second.
I second it.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Towns?
Yes.
Jakes says yes. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
We gonna keep up?
Yeah, Ms. Booker, you gonna keep up?
Yeah, I got, I got scolded within school when I got in.
I understand. I understand.
We understand. Some would do, some have.
I was gonna say, my next, my next statement was, henceforth, we will abide by what the contract calls for.
Yes.
If it would be okay with the board, could I go ahead and go to the addendum packet?
Please.
For twenty-three?
Please.
Thank you. The first one is the Health Department funding. Attached is a letter requesting the return of unspent funding for FY twenty-four twenty-five in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. The purpose
Second.
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Yes, for me? For Townsend?
Yes.
And Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
Last item I have for you is appropriation of the Verso Community Center. CEP Solar has donated ten thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and forty cents to the county on behalf of the Verso Community Center to fund the purchase and installation of a new playground slide and a ten-by-twelve storage building. These funds have been provided directly to the county with the intent that they be appropriated for the benefit of the Verso Community Center to cover the full cost of the equipment and its installation.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Towns?
Yes.
Jakes says yes? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then we have the county attorney's report.
Thank you very much for your acts of forgiveness and understanding and kindness in, in the bills, and I know Mr. Emmett's watching me, so. And some of you, the rest of you maybe as well. As, as you can see, we've been reviewing some contracts with the broadband, doing that easement. We're also currently working on two easements for replacements of Welcome to Prince Edward signs with two individuals. We're also continuing to work on an affidavit of platte to put the, the new road through the business park on record. There again, the opioid settlement, working closely also with the IDA and various contracts that they have. Anyway, it seems to always be busy, and I, I do appreciate it, and I will do better on my paperwork. Anyway, anybody have any questions, concerns? That your eyes haven't already told me? Thank you all again.
We appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
While, while you're there.
Yes, sir.
Doug, can we jump to one ninety-three? Is, is that something that we have to?
Yeah, we can go ahead and take care of that now if you want.
Is that, is that something that Terry is gonna have to do? I was just asking why you were there, Terry.
So, I think Robbie's been handling, there may be an instance where we have to get back in court. You know, there's two properties here. One on Darlington Heights Road, and I know Mr. Gillum has received, I'll, I'll say lightly, numerous complaints, that's fair. And the other one is on, I believe, Railroad Avenue right there.
That's correct. That's right in Prospect.
Right in Prospect. It almost crossed straight from the fire station.
Correct.
Off a lot. We have not gotten cooperation from the property owners. In fact, the the one on Darlington Heights has been kinda in and out, in and out, in and out of compliance. The code does allow us to go in and clean up the properties, and I think that's the, I think the only remedy that's gonna get them done, but we need direction from the board to be able to do.
That's kinda where I was, where I was at. The one on Railroad Avenue, Jerry and I were talking about this earlier, that had a fence around it at one time. There's a reason why it's now visible. It's, it used to be a shop there, and it's always been, like most shops are, had a lot, a lot of stuff there, but the person, the gentleman who owned it then has died, and the fence has fallen down, so that's the reason why you can see it versus it's always been, it's been there for literally forty years. It's just that you could not see any of it. So, that's, that's kinda where I was. Is it something that we? Do we know where we are with it? Is, is, is it something?
Does he have heirs? Anybody knows?
Say again.
Does he have heirs that people know?
Not around here that I know of, but that's. And, and from what I'm, from what I read in the paperwork, it must have changed hands because that's not the same.
Okay.
Not the same. Perhaps just wanted if. I know something has to be done, but I, I don't know that, that we, I don't know that we wanna get started in that business if that's, we're fixing a set of precedents that, I don't know how we go about it, but we're gonna, we're gonna be in a heap of trouble, as the old folks would say.
I think it'll be more and more. I would, I would certainly say that Darlington Heights one, I know I've got more calls on, would be the preference. We can continue trying to work with the property owner before. You know, I think if we get the direction from the board, we can certainly reach out to the property owners one more time and say, look, we've been given direction. Your choice. Do you wanna clean up, or you want us to come in and put a lien on? But it's hiring somebody, putting up, putting up, you know, putting a, dropping a container off and filming it up. A lot of that looks like recyclable material potentially, if that's how.
Per personal opinion, I think that we should definitely talk to the landowner and, and/or, the landowners are not the ones that live there. Is that correct? That, that's.
I know that's
Do you understand, Lou, and I'm not trying to get into somebody's
Lou, it's rental property.
That's what I thought. So, that makes it even tougher in the fact that, yes, it is the owner's responsibility, but it's kinda, in, in one sense, when you rent something, you don't have but so much ability to do something unless it's in the contract to begin with, so. That, that's where I am with. I don't know that the board necessarily wants to get into.
Well, it's not unprecedented. I mean, we had somebody on the back Hampton Sydney Road just a couple of years ago that we, that was also a rental.
Right, but they, but they went on and did it. This has been going on for some time, and now we're gonna have to go to litigation. Just, just something for the board to think about because it's. Any, any ideas, Terry, as far as that's concerned?
Well, Robbie has been handling most of it up to this point, but I do think, you, you try first to give as much notice as you can and try to work with the person that's there. That's gonna be the most, most, least costly avenue. And the one on the back Hampton Sydney Road, finally, it, it did get, it did get accomplished. So, but I'm not sure. I know the one on the Darlington Heights Road, I know we had talked about that before.
You know, I, if you, if you approve the motion, which would authorize me to do it, what I would suggest is I'll give them one final three-day notice and say, you have the sheriff serve it. We're gonna give you thirty more days if you don't do anything. The board's authorized me to go, go forward and do it. That'll give them one more final opportunity to step up and get it done. I'd hope, like, one on the back Hampton Sydney, they would take that initiative and do that.
This is to the tenants.
It's, it, the, the ones we have to deal with are the property owners.
It's gonna go to the property owner, not, not the tenants.
Yeah. And we, we could copy the, you know, the tenant.
I was wondering if we need to send it to both.
We can send it to both. I move we do that. Okay.
I know we, we need to stand behind Robbie. He's spending time doing it.
Yeah, darn right.
He's going out to put it, but all this, we got to stand behind him.
But we can give them one final, final notice prior to doing anything. And I'll keep the board apprised of what's going on.
I would, I would, I personally would go along with one, with one more. With one to.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I guess there's a motion.
Yeah, motion.
Second.
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Yes for Jacobs?
Ms. Emmett?
Yes.
Ms. Towns? Yes, okay.
Karen, you ready? Page 2 of seven.
Yeah, thank you, Karen.
Is that in the board packet? Let me take a, I'm sorry.
That's the flagstaff property, flagstop. You need a copy of, you got one, Terry?
Mr. Chair, while we, we got a little moment. What's the latest on the one at five fourths that we've been after? Two years, three years. I know.
It'll vacillate to, they'll do enough to get into compliance and it'll vacillate back. I can't tell you what the current situation is this week, but I'll, I'll check with Robbie.
Is that also tenant versus owner? That's how sure it was, but that's.
It is.
Would you like to go into closed session?
Actually, Terry's got to, she's going to do this, page 2 of seven.
I don't know whether y'all recall this, when out, the Wawa and the Flagstop, when the title search was done, it was discovered that part of it had been deeded to the IDA, but part of the property was still retained by the county. I don't know if y'all recall that, that transaction back in 2023. But anyway, the county and the, and the IDA sold a portion of the current Flagstop property to C Store Farmville Route 15 LLC, November 27, 2023. And then they turned around and sold it to the current owner, the Nestar Company LLC, on May 8 of 2024. And a portion of that Flagstop property is located within the Prince Edward County Industrial Park, which is subject to protective covenants, which were recorded in deed book 370, page 634. And we attached a copy for you. And there's several of those protective covenants that are of particular interest to a new buyer who is researching the property currently known as the Flagstop property. The Flagstop property was developed under a conditional use permit, and I have the number there, and that was approved by the Board of Supervisors on September 12, 2023. It was approved by the county and a currently developed building has a building that is smaller than the 7,000 square feet and has a front yard setback that may exceed the 100 foot maximum provided for. The protective covenants address the size of the building and the setback. But this conditional use permit allowed the Flagstop to build the car wash building. At the time of the Flagstop property being developed, which was done in concert, you remember, with the Wawa building next door, the protective covenant, which allows for the repurchase of any lot where construction fails to commence within one year from the date of purchase, was deemed not to be an issue as the construction began almost immediately after the transaction. And also the fact that the lot was so rapidly improved, the other covenant that addressed the right of first refusal should the grantee of any parcel of unimproved property decide to sell or transfer the parcel and a part thereof. It mainly was put in there in case we didn't want vacant land sitting there and then we didn't want somebody to buy it and speculate on it and turn around and sell it to somebody else. We wanted to come back to the IDA. That was the reason behind the covenant at the time. The new potential purchaser, in their due diligence period, requested that the Board of Supervisors confirm, confirm the above actions of the predecessors entitled and submitted a letter, which I sent you a copy of, which memorializes the understanding of the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors and the IDA. Due the expiration of their due diligence period on August 4, the letter was endorsed by the county administrator and the chair of the IDA with the understanding of the need for full confirmation of the two boards at their next regularly scheduled meetings. The IDA will address the same issue at their meeting to be held on August 22, 2025. So anyway, it's our recommendation that the board confirm the content and the signature of the letter and the fact that these four covenants have really been, they've been waived basically by, by the fact that it is a car wash building and where it sits and that it's been developed, it's not sitting there vacant. So anyway, anybody have any questions or concerns for me?
Still move.
Second. Two by Dillon?
Yes.
Two by Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by Gill?
Yes.
Okay. Two by Towns?
Yes.
Two by Dillon?
Yes.
Lambeau, yes. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have the county administrator's report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, a few things to touch on. First, the county was notified this past week that we will be the recipient of a VACO Achievement Award this year. The county submitted a request for solving civic challenges through innovative collaboration, through our partnership with Longwood University, through the Civitae Student Symposium to garner feedback on the challenges facing Prince Edward to incorporate into the comprehensive plan. This is our third consecutive award and I want to thank Sarah for helping to pull the application together. Last week, I took a site tour with board chair and supervisor Gillum out to the school construction site. English has made significant progress with the new construction. They anticipate being able to take occupancy of the, the new building in January, which will allow them to move into renovation of some of the current educational space. If you are interested in taking a tour of the building, please reach out to me and I'll get hold of the superintendent and we'll try to set something up. School construction grant, staff has met virtually with the Department of Education. Davenport Mosley Architects to review the process to begin drawing down the $8.6 million construction grant that was awarded in 2024 by the state. We want to use those funds for the project prior to drawing down our VPSA bond. Five Pillars meets held a soft opening in the retail store on July 26. The slaughter processing facility is not open yet as they're still waiting delivery of additional equipment, but they plan to hold a grand opening of the facility on September 13. And I've already been in and bought my first steaks, so good stuff. If you haven't been by, please get by. Our FY 25 audit, Robinson Farmer &amp; Cox was on site July 30 to August 1 to conduct pre-audit fieldwork. They also have tentatively planned for being here on December 9 to brief the audit committee and the board during the meeting, again, dependent on completion of pre-audit work. Our economic development strategic plan, staff has scheduled a presentation of the adopted strategic plan at September 8, Chamber of Commerce luncheon. Anybody, if you're available at noon that day and can make it, love to have you attend and the county will cover your attendance cost. The day is that? 8th. I think it's the second Monday of September, week after Labor Day. As the board chair noted, he and I took a tour of the ICA facility with representatives from Core Civic, the new owner of the facility. We had the opportunity to meet their president during the tour, who was in from Nashville. They're looking to make significant investment upgrades to the facility systems in the coming year. They're seeing sometimes 30 to 40 new detainees coming through the facility each day from points as far north as Massachusetts and far south in Georgia. I think they'll be a good partner for the county. I know supervisor Cooper Jones and supervisor Watson have previously been on a tour, but if any of you would like to go to the facility, please reach out to me and let me know. Strategic plan, as you know, it was really 2018, I think is the last time the board did its strategic plan. But Dr. Pratt, chair of the strategic planning committee, and I met with our consultant, Tyler St. Clair, to try to coordinate a schedule for the full board to meet and discuss an update of our strategic plan. We had hoped to do that late summer, early fall, but Tyler's going to be unavailable until November and then we're into elections and Christmas and all that fun stuff, the VACO conference. So we've tentatively decided to push till January and a couple of the dates, I have it here somewhere, that we were looking at. So it'll be a half day, maybe like January the 8th, if people could look, I could email this out too. And then come back on the 29th and 30th, which had to be the half day on Thursday and the half day on Friday. It's the fifth Thursday, Friday of the month, so hopefully people wouldn't have stuff normally scheduled those dates. But I'm going to send it out now. I'm trying to get on everybody's calendar now so that we can book those dates. But if you have a conflict, let me know when I send the email out to you. We'll try to make some adjustments. Let's see, the only other thing, our worship convenience site, staff opened the temporary convenience site on July 31. Contractor completed survey work last week and they're doing demo and clearing this week. Also, we completed site improvements to the Verso site with some grading and installation, some drain tile to address some drainage issues. Lastly, as Ms. Bucket noted, Sandy River Road Route 612, we don't anticipate the bridge repairs to be completed and the roadway reopen by Monday, September 8. We hope that's the outside date and if it's open sooner, so much the better. But one last thing, I know there's a bunch of board engagement opportunities coming up. I know Dominion's got a presentation lunch at Rice Fire Department on August 19 at 11. We got a meet and greet with the new regional economic development director on the 28th, if you, if you've been able to set up that. And I think new teacher welcome on the motin at the September 10. So I'll, I keep sending those out in my weekly reports, but please put on your calendar. And I believe, Dr. Pratt, what's, what's our latest date, what's our final date for?
September 23rd.
23rd from the 18th, okay. What time is that Dominion presentation? 11:00 AM on the 19th. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, unless there are any questions.
Okay. Doug, one quick question. You were talking about the convenience centers. Are steel recyclables and/or whatever, do we know what we're getting paid for?
So we're, we're still taking those to J&amp;J market rate?
I think, I think when we get the, when we.
Get the?
Yeah.
Correct.
You know, when we get the payment, it should come with the.
It'll, it'll come with a receipt.
Yeah.
Eight, you know, we're.
About eight cents.
But that's what I, that's, I knew that just because I knew it. But anyway, we're, we're way behind on, on what the market is, market value is considerably more than that right now.
Maybe we can talk to Elite, who's our new recycling contractor, see what.
He's, he's, he's the same thing. There are two, there are two other companies that are interested, B&amp;B Recycling out of Danville. They would be at, at, right now, they would be at 10 cent, possibly 12.
Pick up from us?
They would like it delivered to Pamplin and just dump in a pile. They have a, they have.
Yeah, if you can have them reach out to us, we'd be glad to.
Melvin Burnett is who's, who's the president of that, I'd like for. Our boxes that we get are way more valuable than market value simply because they have copper brass, aluminum.
If you pick it through it, there's a lot more.
Which is what, which is what they'll, they'll do.
Aluminum cans, things like that.
Correct.
Higher value.
For, for us to just be getting below base price is not fair to the county regardless. It's, it's something that we need to look at, so.
Yeah, if you can send his contact information.
I'll get him to give you a call or something else.
Okay.
Elite would also like to bid on it, but they're going to be close to it. I, I know Mike will. We need to go into closed session. Anything else going on? Oh, you got the sheet on, I don't have it. Hold on. 2.2-3711 A2.
Take it.
A3. Ahead of me tonight. Discussion A3, Code of Virginia, for discussion acquisition of real property and the purpose of county solid waste management gift deed where discussion is 2.2-3711 A3. There's a motion. Second. Two by Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by Watson?
Yes.
Two by Dillon?
Yes.
Yes for Jacobs?
Yes.
Yes. We're now in closed session.